We'll get started. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of Tuesday, April 9th, 2024. We're all going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific requests before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this helps provide a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. Thank you. So I need, let's take attendance.
So noted.
I'd just like to remind all of the board members that in order for the recording to be audible, we need to speak into the microphone and speak clearly. So no need to rush your comments. So I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of March 12th, 2024, or any corrections?
Support.
A motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and the minutes are approved. I'd like everyone in the audience to know that Item 7, 2940 Mace Field Drive, will not be considered tonight. It's been postponed. And Item 10, 7106 Old Mill has been withdrawn. So those two items will not be taken up tonight. And with that, let's call the first item, 1435 North Cranbrook. Is the applicant ready?
Hi all. My name is Sabrina Brown, and I'm with Moser Design Company on behalf of the homeowners at 1435 North Cranbrook. We are here today asking for a permission variance for a fireplace with a trellis as well as a pool slide in the rear yard. Our original request did include a race spa, but we did decide to lower that flush with the pool. The mentioned restructures are all within the required setbacks, and we are proposing to enclose any openings in the property with mature evergreens. As for the dimensional variance, we are requesting variance relief for proposed four-foot tall pool code fence along Tottenham Road. This is off of the property line so that it can be adequately screened with evergreens. Due to the unique configuration of the lot in relation to the road, this presents a unique circumstance that others within the neighborhood don't have to contend with. We believe that based on the unique property characteristics that this request meets the standards for practical difficulty. The above items have been reviewed and approved by Bloomfield Village Association. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the board have any questions? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion or discussion.
With respect to the property located at 1435 North Cranbrook Road, I would first move to grant the permission request because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standard. And I'll note that this is further proposed trellis, pool slide, and fireplace, and the request for the spa has been withdrawn. These structures are compatible to adjoining properties appropriate for the neighborhood and harmonious with the neighborhood. With respect to the request for a dimensional variance, I would move to approve that as well because the applicant has demonstrated a practical difficulty. And the practical difficulty is by virtue of the unique shape of the lot and the location of the home of the lot, which makes it difficult to screen otherwise. If appro, and this is not self-created, and these are unique circumstances. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits obtained prior to construction. And you are proposing the evergreen screening along the side to screen that fence, that will be a requirement of the motion as well.
Absolutely.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling the next item, Item 2, 3313 Barron. Is the applicant ready?
Good evening. My name is Steve Azio. I'm a landscape architect with Great Oaks Landscape. Our address is 28025 Samuel Linden Court, Novi, Michigan, 48377. I am joined by Jeff Finari, also of Great Oaks Landscape, and we are representing Mr. and Mrs. Abro tonight, who are the homeowners of 3313 Barron Drive. Before we begin, I would like to thank the board for hearing our request this evening. Per our submittal, we are requesting approval for a 28-foot by 47-foot basketball sports court, which does not include lights or fencing, in the rear yard of the property and an outdoor kitchenette in the rear yard as well. These proposed items will require three-dimensional variances due to the hardship created by the lot's abnormal pie shape. A two-foot, 10-inch dimensional variance for the east side of the sports court, an 11-foot, 5-inch dimensional variance for the north side of the sports court, and a four-foot dimensional variance for the kitchenette are requested. The lot that these items will be located on is 159 feet wide at the front and narrows to 87 feet at the rear, much less than the 130-foot lot width in which the ordinances were written to accommodate. All three of our requests are directly tied to the lot's decreasing width and abnormal rear lot line. To note the dramatic constraint this creates, if the lot were consistent 159 feet wide, the sports court could fit immediately to the east of the pool patio in its current configuration and have approximately five feet of distance to the setback. If we were to reduce the lot to the minimum width, but it were consistent at 130 feet wide, the pool and rotated sports court could fit side by side by simply moving the pool to the west and placing the court to the east. In addition, the rear property line is inconsistent and angles toward the house to accommodate the public space and walkway behind the property. If this back property line were parallel to the house at a distance equal to that northeast corner, no variance would be required on that back property line. The court would actually be 20 feet away from the property line if it were parallel to the house from that far corner. The four-foot variance for the kitchenette is also dictated by the lot shape. If the lot were rectangular, the house could have been placed further to the east, allowing the kitchenette without variance. Currently, where the kitchenette is placed, the widest part of the lot is 122 feet, 8 inches wide. Again, if it were the minimum of 130 feet wide per the ordinance at this location, we would not have the additional four feet variance that we are requesting necessary. Finally, I would like to mention that this plan and solution works with existing site grades and does not require any wall height variances even with the placement of the amenities within the setbacks. We would like to close by reiterating that much thought was taken to create a solution minimizing variances where possible, minimizing vari, uh, we were able to do this by terracing the amenities in the rear yard and eliminating wall variances, variance requests that would be required if the amenities were rearranged. This also helps to minimize the impact to the neighbors by keeping all of the proposed improvements as close to existing grade as possible. Thank you, and I can take any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions from the board?
I have a quick question. Have you spoken to your neighbors that are most impacted by the kitchenette?
We at Great Oaks have not. I'm not sure of the homeowners, if they've discussed it. However, that kitchenette will be screened by Arborvitae Evergreen Plantings, so there will not be much visual impact to the neighbors.
Well, I understand all the other constraints with your pie-shaped lot. That one is kind of on the straight edge, and I wonder if it could be smaller.
So currently, right now.
Moved in.
There is an existing terrace on the back of the property that requires egress from the house, and it kind of wraps.
Can you point that out?
Yeah, so this terrace here, we've created steps that wrap this, so homeowners have easy access to both the backyard and exiting in case of, just in case of any emergencies or just ease of access. So this pinch point here with the two required steps currently is six feet. So that's kind of where that four-foot variance is required. If we were to move that into even four feet, a variance would still be required to accommodate that.
So there's a grade difference also being taken up in those steps, in that pinch point?
You can kind of see that area right there. I wouldn't say that the kitchenette solves any grade constraints at that location, no.
So I mean, I understand that you have a, I guess you could say, irregularly shaped lot.
Yes.
My only concern is, you know, part of why we have these setbacks is because of the nature of Bloomfield Township. People want wide-open spaces, greenery. We're not Birmingham where you're, you know, right on top of your neighbors. And I understand they want these accessory structures, but, you know, sometimes you can't have it all. And my concern is, especially with a sports court, you're encroaching, you know, more than half of the required setback, even if it's screened with evergreens, you're going to have noise, and you're getting close, I mean, I'm going to say too close to the neighbors.
With the location of the sports courts on the back of this property, you'll notice that there's actually a public space behind it, and we will be screening the sports court both from the property with Arborvitae, but there's also, I believe, subdivision-required plantings and evergreen screening outside of the property at this location. So our thought with that would be that if a basketball hoop would be installed on the driveway as maybe typical, the exact same noise that would be created from a driveway basketball hoop would be created back here. There would be no additional noise, but this would actually create more of a noise and distraction to the neighboring properties than one that would be located close to the public space.
I don't think her comment was on the sports court location. It's sort of the combination of the sports court and the kitchenette together. So you've taken up quite a bit of space with the sports court, therefore making the kitchenette location in the pinch point. So that's kind of the issue. Is there any other place to put the kitchenette?
The reason for the placement of the kitchenette at that location is just ease of access from the interior of the home where the kitchen is located to the kitchenette and kind of bar area. So the location that we chose was ease of access. Anywhere within this kind of dining area would have the same central location, I guess you would say, without encroaching within that walkway, and therefore would have the same setback encroachment on this side.
Yeah, I guess I'm struggling with just the size of that. I mean, it's a full U shape, you know? Could it be four feet smaller or?
Can we see the aerial again? No, I mean of the kitchenette on the.
Oops. This one?
Do you want to go back further and then slid over a bit? So we gave you a for feedback?
You're saying to pull it closer and?
Slide it back a little bit and then move it closer to the east.
So pull it a little bit closer in and possibly reduce the size of it?
Yeah, if you move it back, you have more room to go to the side, I think.
Oh, back this way as well?
Still have access to that.
Yes. Yeah. No, I think we can relook at the design of this if it is a point of contention. And if we could possibly move forward on a vote on the other items while we do that, is that possible?
And it may also be helpful if you talk to the adjacent neighbors as well, because that would help. I mean, if they don't have a problem, if it's properly screened, stuff like that, too, we can take that in consideration, but that would be something that I would highly suggest to consider.
It's just that the, you know, kitchenette area is going to have a lot of activity in it, so if there's some way to minimize the encroachment, that would be helpful.
Okay, we can definitely be willing to look into that.
It seems to me that if he's going to look at that, that it would be better just to.
Look at the whole thing.
We don't want to piecemeal it.
Did we open the public comment? You're from the neighbors.
Are we done with the questions?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, I'd like to open this to the public. Anyone here like to comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing and then if they resubmit, when would they be able to come back before us?
I think at this point, you just want them to submit a revised plan, and then we will renotice it accordingly to put it on the next available meeting.
If we were to rescind the request of the kitchenette, would we be able to vote on the sports court this evening?
I'd be willing to move forward with that and, you know, wait and see what they want to do with the kitchenette. I understand the sports court hardship and.
Right.
But do they go hand in hand? That's my question. My, you know, I don't know.
Well, I guess what he's saying is, sports court's very important to him. He's willing to risk the kitchenette in exchange for moving forward on the sports court. Am I hearing you correctly?
Yes, just kind of the process.
It's going to limit your options then, so you're kind of understanding you're committing to the sports court.
And we are not, the kitchenette would not be allowed within a setback after this.
Well, we're.
Well, can I say something?
Yes.
I mean, since the pool's not in, why don't you look to put the kitchenette around the corner to the right, closer to the house, the back of the house there, instead of moving it off to the side? If you're talking, then you'd come right out of the door and you'd turn the corner, and there's your kitchenette.
A logistical question. If we could approve this without the four-foot variance on the kitchenette, do they still need to come back and show us their final plans?
If you could ask that one more time, I was thinking about alternatives for the project, so one more time?
Could we approve the overall plan, just saying no four-foot variance on the kitchenette? They can locate it where they want and just come in for administrative approval, or does it need to come back here?
Well, there is an allowance, as you recall, where you can have a kitchenette off of a patio immediately to the rear of a home.
To a home?
Speak into the microphone.
I will. And so, to your point, yes, they could accommodate the kitchenette location and comply with the ordinance and not have to come back.
Not have to come back.
So, but unfortunately, that's not the case with the sports court. So there would be a possibility that they could proceed without having to reapply or submit alternate drawings if they'd like.
Is that what you'd like to do based on?
I think so. If we were to take your comments and shift the kitchenette to the east toward the house, minimize the size so it's in the same general location, but does not encroach within that setback, if that location is approvable, I think that we would be willing to move forward on that.
Just to understand, it has to be behind the rear plane of the home, so it's not just tucking it closer to the side of the home. Actually, it has to be towards the rear of the home, the rear plane.
This location here.
That's the rear plane, yes.
Not necessarily this.
Correct.
Are there windows in that center section, large windows, looking out to the pool?
I believe that there is a door wall in this location, and I am not quite sure if there are.
It was pretty much brick in that back area, along that one wall. See? That's just brick. That's why my suggestion of flipping it around there. Don't have any windows or anything else there.
Yeah, I think my fear with moving that into this general location is it would create a pinch point between the pool and that kitchenette. Without having the measurements in front of me, I wouldn't know how much, but just really reducing the walkway there.
You need to look at alternatives.
Sure.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that's going to reflect, we'll approve the sport court and, you know, some language about the kitchenette, you know, no variance for the kitchenette. If you can come up with something that meets the ordinance without coming back to us, great. If you want to come back to us, maybe have some neighbor comment.
Well, I think he withdrew the request for the.
The kitchenette.
Kitchenette, right?
I think.
At this time.
I forgot that we had to, we had the dimensional variance, which we were requesting, but I forgot there's also the.
Permission.
Permission request. So I guess my request would be if we could have the permission request, but withdraw the dimensional variance request as long as it were located within the.
But the location of it is a determining factor on whether we grant.
Yeah, we have to see the location. We have to, we approve things in writing.
He can work with our department as well. If he does come up with an alternative, we can find something that complies with our ordinance.
Without coming back here?
Correct.
I'm willing to make a motion that way.
It's possible.
Okay.
I mean, I think just deny the kitchenette and approve everything else, and then he's.
Or just, he said it's, withdrew it.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the best way to go. And if he comes up with a kitchenette plan that doesn't come back here, then he's good to go.
If it does have to come back here for your permission approval.
But I'm saying you can start on the other stuff, and then we could either approve or deny that. So I think we're good.
Okay. With respect to the zoning appeal at 1313 Barron Drive, I move to approve the dimensional variance for the sports court encroaching into the rear yard per the drawings attached. The applicant has demonstrated hardship based on the drawing shown with the public property in the rear and the pie-shaped lot. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, given the attempts that they've made and that it is public property behind and the unique circumstances again of the lot. I think it also requires a permission request for the sports court only at this time. Needs to be screened from public view and needs to meet the hours of use and no illumination. Should this applicant, should the motion be approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits obtained prior to construction. The evergreens, again, need to shield the sports court from public view and the daytime hours. This motion does not include the kitchenette.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed. Should I do a roll call or? Okay. Fickie? No. Meads?
Yes.
Rosati? Giugrande?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Gittleman?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Calling the next item, Item 3. 63, 6830 White Pine Drive.
So that pool already is in the footings. What needs for the pool already there?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Sidney Kennard, and I stay at 6830 White Pine Drive. My wife and I, Diane, we're the owners there. And we're here to request a six-foot privacy fence along the back portion of our yard. We have a pool, and we have been battling with the resident behind us with debris above our fence line, and it's probably been going on for, I'm going to say, at least three years. So we did go to court just last week, and she was given 30 days to clean up the debris, but it's been on and off, on and off for three years at least. So it's obscene gestures posted in her window facing the pool. Grandkids, great-grandkids, they think it's funny, but I think it's just ridiculous. And just to, so we can have our backyard and have our own privacy and not have to deal with her debris that she collects and piles along our fence line. So the fence line was there when we purchased the house over 20 years ago, and it has a six-foot fence on the one side, which is the north side, and just a four-foot length fence along the back. So just for me to, us to keep from seeing the debris in her backyard, I did put the construction cloth along the four-foot length fence because it was chairs. I don't know if you can see any, yeah, you can see some of the pictures right there to your right, little portions of fence. I don't know what that is. I think she just go out and collects debris and piles it on our fence, and that sits right in front of where we sit at. So we're just here to request permission to put the six-foot fence up. If you could look at the, it's six foot by 106 feet across the back.
It's white?
Yes.
So is that your chain link fence there?
Yes.
So you're going to remove that and replace it with what you're proposing?
We're going to try to remove it, but if you look at the picture, she has all kind of debris and trees laying up against the fence. Eventually, it's going to come over. So that's one of my complaints that the township has been addressing as well.
So you might actually want to keep it and build your fence like in front of the chain link?
Yes, for now, and then I can remove it later, but right now, just so we can have our summer this year. I retired last year, and I like to spend more time in my backyard, but just dealing with that, I would go ahead and pay the cost to have a privacy fence put along the back.
Well, I, question, you've mentioned that you put some construction screening or something along the fence, four-foot fence, and that didn't give you enough privacy? I mean, just the height. Once you put that up, you didn't, still didn't feel the privacy.
Well, see, it's going above the four-foot fence. So I don't see what's below it, but I can't see what's above it. And now she's starting to pile stuff above it. I mean, it's from like abandoned house window paves, this leaning on my fence and leaning on her tree. It's just ridiculous. I don't understand it. So.
Is her property at the same level as yours, or is it, I can't tell. Is it higher?
No, hers is a little higher.
That's what it looks like. So it's a bit of a change in the grade up to her. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
So Patty, did the township file enforcement? This went to district court, and the judge did order a 30-day cleanup of the property. At the end of 30 days, should it not be cleaned to the satisfaction of the township, then the judge and the attorneys will be making a site visit to determine why it's not being cleaned. But this sounds like it may be a continuous problem.
It's adversarial, so I don't think this is the last.
Yeah.
I have pictures from 2021. It's just, it's been ongoing. She cleans up a little bit to appease the court and what have you, and we redo it all over again. Have to go through the same thing, so.
So I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion in regards to the appeal at 6830 White Pine Drive for a variance. I move a variance of a proposed six-foot high vinyl fence. I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the striclet of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because it would, without the privacy fence, it would prevent reasonable use of the property and all of the amenities on their property. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because the fence actually. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because the fence actually will actually give them both privacy on both sides. Unique circumstances with the property, there is a unique circumstance, the need for privacy, but also aesthetics. And that is unique and because of that it is not self-created. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And I don't think any
I don't think so.
I don't, there's no way to screen it.
This is an exceptional case.
Yes.
Right, so I am not going to add any additional evergreen plantings or any screening required.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling next item, item four, three, five, eight, South Cranbrook.
Hello. My name's Andrew Mensing. I'm, I live at three, five, eight, South Cranbrook. I'm looking to, well, I'll read it first. Twelve by twelve by less than fourteen-foot-high addition onto the existing non-conforming detached garage located in the rear encroaching up to six feet into the required sixteen northerly side yard setback. And then also a home addition encroaching less than one foot into the required sixteen-foot south yard setback. So the yellow area is the, is the back of the yard. I want to continue the side of the north side of the garage back for a twelve-by-twelve-foot area for yard equipment and stuff like that. That is the, the larger encroachment. And then on the south line, I want to go four foot to the south off the existing structure. And it's about a couple inches, eight inches past the setback. But then as it goes to the west, it comes back on the west, southwest corner is back within the setback. So it's just a kind of a small triangle there that's encroaching. I do have written support from the neighbors on the north. There's two neighbors, could you go back to that one?
Do you want to go back to this one? Wait, I'm sorry, do you want me to go to that one to show the neighbors?
Sure. So I have
You can use a pointer there if you got me right there. Just want to hold on to that part in the top. There you go.
Okay. I have written, written support and I don't know if you, did you guys see that written support? Okay. So from three, three, eight and from two, five, oh, nine. And then I just got another letter here if you'd like to see it from three, four, one. As well as the homeowner association. Here's three, four, one. And then I've got verbal support from about three other neighbors in the area, so. Been talking to everybody.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, so that six feet that's into the sixteen-foot northerly side, that's, that's already existing, right? And you're just building on top of it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, building
It's extending.
Extending it, yeah. Not, not up, extending it back or to the west.
Any other questions? Open this to the public for comment. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for motion or discussion.
Well.
You're up. Your turn.
Okay, in regards to the appeal at three fifty-eight South Cranbrook Road, I'll start with the permission request first. For the accessory structure of a detached garage addition, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards because the accessory structure shall not be objectionable, objectionable to nearby residents because for one, he actually took the time to talk to his neighbors. So I'm glad you did that.
Thank you.
And he also has the support of his association. In terms of the dimensional variance, I also move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the let me see. Well, basically because of the unique shape of the lot. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, also because he has the support of the neighbors. The unique circumstances of the property, he already has a non-conforming structure on the property and he's just adding to that and because of that it is not self-created. With that, if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed house and garage addition and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the detached garage addition from public view.
Support.
I have motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item five, one, seven, three, eight, South Gulf Ridge.
Hello, everybody. Carlos Hossano, homeowner at seventeen thirty-eight South Gulf Ridge Drive. Here looking for a variance for two retaining walls. Going to be putting a pool in, so the right side of that picture would be the south side of the pool. And what would be kind of the bottom middle is the north-facing portion. The retaining wall is over the four-foot requirement. It's five foot on one side and I think about seven feet on the other side, if I'm not mistaken. So the ask is for permission to extend that wall up a couple of feet. It is as a result of the grade change from the back of my house towards the golf course. So I have no neighbors directly to the west behind me. In addition, there is a request for a variance for the trellis that you can see there that will have a kitchen, kitchenette underneath it. I do have support from all my neighbors on both sides. I do not have that in writing, but I would be happy to get it if it's required. And I also have sign-off from the homeowners association.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
So is that going to be like, is it fully screened with what you're proposing or will, would that screen from public view the way you have it here?
Yeah, there's landscaping on the south side that would cover basically the whole retaining wall facing south. And then you can see some light planting there, but I'm probably eighty feet away from the neighbor whose house is parallel with mine, so you can't even really see it there. And that's the golf course headed north as well. So really nobody's looking at this but people playing golf.
Does that require, I mean, that looks dangerous to me. Aren't there any
I, that was I asked fencing?
Well, there, there is fencing.
You can just slide back and fall off.
Laser pointer, hold on. So through this area right here
This part right here, the other side.
This?
Yeah.
That's glass railing.
It's a glass.
You can't see it, but you see the little white posts?
I was one
Oh, yeah.
Can't see it, that's why.
No, I'm sorry. There, there's glass railing all along here.
Okay.
All along here.
Cause I'm going, it doesn't look good at all.
Yeah, there'll be a gate here and a gate here so that nobody can access the pool, which essentially encloses the whole pool and creates the fence.
Okay.
Has that infinity wall been golf ball tested?
I'm not sure.
That's like eight feet high.
We're not a hundred percent sure. That may end up just being stone, but Matt Mosher has an expensive taste, so.
Okay. All right, any other questions? So we'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I can make a motion here for the, I'll start with the permission request at one, seven, three, eight, Salt, South Gulf Ridge Drive for the proposed trellis. I'm going to move that that be approved as submitted. The applicant did demonstrate forty-two dash seven point six standards because the accessory structure is not going to hinder or discourage the use of adjacent property due to the fact that it's within the setbacks and is not going to be visible to any of the neighbors. With regard to the dimensional variance for the pool retaining wall exceeding four feet at one, seven, three, eight, South Gulf Ridge Drive, I'm going to move that that also be approved as requested. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the grading that they have there in the backyard. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that we've heard no opposition tonight and we've been told that the neighbors are in support of this project. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, again, given the topography and the grading in the backyard and none of this is self-created. I will add that all necessary permits should be made within one year and obtained prior to construction. And I'm not going to add that additional evergreen is required, but really we like it to be screened from public view.
Yep.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Calling next item, item six, six, eight, eight, one, Valley Spring Road.
Good evening. I'm here with PM Technologies for the request for the generator. The homeowner here in the backyard has a fully enclosed patio here with windows representing all the way around. There's really no location other than outside of that location to place the generator. She currently has a location for garbage bins and stuff that's fully fenced in. There isn't enough room to put the generator inside the fencing. Over here, which is located right here. We are looking at putting the generator located right here with full screening all the way around the unit. We're about sixty foot from, let me go this way. We're sixty foot from the adjacent neighbor property line and probably a hundred and twenty foot, a hundred and fifty foot from the actual house.
What's the screening going to be? What type of?
She would like to plant some smaller, like these little, she has like these little green bushes that are already
Are they the height of the generator?
Yeah, the height of the generator. The generator is only about waist-high, it's an air-cooled unit, so it's not, it's not one of the big giant units that you'd normally see in a neighborhood like this. She's got like, kind of like an evergreen style bush that she wants to put around here. And there's actually trees that are here that are actually, and when it, spring comes, it will be fully bushed out and look really nice in there. They have like a white flower to them. I forget what they're called exactly.
They are evergreen, so they'll also screen it during the winter?
Correct. We're gonna add those additional to it, yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Open the public hearing. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I can make a motion for this one.
Thank you so much.
So with regard to the dimensional variance at six, eight, eight, one, Valley Spring Road for the generator not immediately adjacent to the residence, I'm going to move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the windows that are surrounding the home and the unsafe nature of putting a generator next to those windows. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that generators are becoming very common in the township and we've heard no opposition this evening. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given the windows that are already existing on the home. And for all those reasons, this is not self-created. All necessary permits should be made within one year and obtained prior to installation. And evergreen screenings will be required to screen the generator twelve months out of the year and they have to be at the height of the generator or higher at the time of planting.
Support.
I have a motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you. Good evening.
As I said, item seven has been postponed, so we'll move to item eight. Four, nine, two, zero, Dryden Lane.
Good evening, board. My name's Dan McCleesh and I'm here representing our resident at forty-nine, twenty Dryden. And we're looking for approval for a forty-four by twenty-two pool house in the rear yard. It meets the twenty-five foot or sixteen-foot setback that the minimal, we're at twenty-five feet from the easterly property line. We do have the HOA approval from the, and actually the HOA president lives next door to the resident as well. And as you see on the plan there, we also show evergreen screening on all three sides of the rear yard. And we're here seeking approval for this, please.
Any questions from the board? Open this to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'll make them.
Okay.
Regarding the appeal at forty-nine, twenty Dryden Lane for the accessory structure pool house, I move the request be approved and submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards because the location accessory structure without hinder or discourage additional use of the property due to the fact that it meets the township setback on the side as well as the neighborhood setback. And it doesn't, it doesn't exceed the height and it will be screened twelve months out of the year. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits made within one year for the proposed pool house and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the pool house from public view twelve months out of the year. And a single-family affidavit must be filed with the township prior, prior to putting up the whole pool house.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
So we're going to item nine, one, three, seven, five, Senate Court. Is the applicant ready? Is the applicant here?
Applicant. Okay, I move that we move this to the end of the agenda.
Support.
Or no?
A motion in support to move to the end, the end, agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move it to the end of the agenda. Item ten has been withdrawn, so we'll move to item eleven, five, nine, four, one, East Miller Road.
Hello, my name is James Weiss. I'm with Great Lakes Custom Builder. I'm here representing the homeowners at five, nine, four, one, East Miller Way, asking for two variances. One is to install a sport court twenty-five foot, twenty-six foot, I'm sorry, by forty-five foot long in the rear property as well as a retaining wall, four foot tall on the north and eastern corner of the retain, of the sports court. Due to the grade, we have a ten-foot drop from the western, north, I'm sorry, southwestern corner to the Oh, thank you. Thank you, no, I'm trying to go off memory. From the southwestern, southeastern corner to the northeastern corner, we have approximately a ten-foot drop in grade. And if we're able to install the retaining wall with the sport court, it'll help prevent a lot of that water rush off that we were having before and will have without it. Thank you.
Was the grade of the property raised at all during?
No, we have not changed the grade at all. Where the sport court will be installed, we would be raising it there.
How much is the grade being raised to install the sports court?
Approximately, well, I can tell you exactly, I'm sorry. Three foot. Two foot on the southern side and three foot on the northern end.
Any other questions?
And we would obviously be screening, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, but we'd be screening all sides with our provides. And we do have permission from the neighbors and the homeowners association.
So I see a grading drainage plan here, so outside the retaining wall, you are managing your water to the township's requirements?
Well, from speaking with the engineer
Like between the wall and the property line?
Pardon me?
Between the wall and the property line. Your water management is
Actually, these lots are grandfathered in because of the, the existing grade. We're not going to be increasing the grade. We're going to actually be decreasing it with this retaining wall. If we don't have the retaining wall, it would be at the normal grade, which would be a ten-foot drop.
So when you say grandfathered, what are you referring to?
The engineer and the building department told us that this, these lots since they're on on the golf course, they are grandfathered in, that they can't add any catch basins or way of removing the water, just, it's the way it's drainage, and I don't know if it's because they want it to drain towards the pond that's in the northern portion of the property and the golf course so that they use it for irrigation. That's my assumption, but I haven't inquired about that.
To your point, he will be required to comply with the drainage requirements for that property in that area. We are questioning the amount of adequate space to be able to screen the masonry wall.
We do have adequate, yeah.
And what, what is the dimensions, the outside dimensions that you'd be able to accommodate?
2.4 foot on the northern side and 4.3 foot on the eastern end.
And in that area, you're intending to screen it with arborvitae?
Arborvitae, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that was my question too. We need a drainage swell back there, plus, you know, your screening, it's...
There are no drainage swells.
Not a swell, but it's just, it's sloping.
Yes.
I can read that from the drawing, so, to accomplish all of that in both the side setback...
We've talked with the engineer, and as well as our engineer, and they both agreed that this was approved.
Is there room for plantings?
Yes.
And there's room to, I'm sorry, on the northern side, there's?
Yes, there's 2.4 feet.
Any other questions from the board? So, I'll open this to the public, anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back.
Well, it's just a large encroachment on both, both the rear setback and the side setback, you know, we're not here to design it, but can't it be closer?
Moved over.
One, or moved, especially away from the north, I guess.
It's right up there against the north.
Too close. Like, what is happening between the...
Right, there's spare space.
There's lawn in there, could that not be moved closer to what looks like patio?
Definitely, we can move it however far you would like.
Can we have 16 feet?
Within the setback.
We wouldn't because of the pool and the patio deck around the pool.
So, what's the most that you could move it in?
What's the space there between your yellow highlight and your paving? Can it not be?
If we were to move the retaining wall up even with the sport court, that would put it at seven foot.
What is the distance between, see where it says Lot 42, that white area? What's that distance between the yellow and the other?
And the paving?
It is roughly five foot.
That's all?
We have a, we have a fence going on top of the retaining wall.
It can't be, then your driveway's basically seven feet wide. Wait, say that, what were you saying? I'm sorry.
We have a fence going on top of the retaining wall, that's why we wanted some room between the sport court and the retaining wall. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you mean like a sports fence?
No, just a four-foot fence to keep people out of the property.
Point to the area you're speaking of. Here's a pointer, I'm sorry, I don't have the individual ones, if you could just use that, that might help.
No, I'm terrible at these too.
The guy for the questions?
If this is the sport court here, what is the dimension of that white space?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you moved it over adjacent to your patio?
I don't have the exact scale, but I'm going to say it's approximately 10-foot.
That's a lot of room.
So, what if you walked off your patio onto your sport court?
We could do that.
Is that your question too?
Yes.
And alleviate at least one of these nine and 11-foot variances?
So, is that possible to move it?
Yes, sir.
I'm just, I'm familiar with this location, and it's quite visible, I mean, it's exposed, there is a change in the grade, you'd see that retaining wall from a number of houses on the golf course, on the golf course itself.
That would give, if it could be moved in, it would give a lot more area for screening, real property.
Yeah, it just seems like you're unnecessarily pinching both those boundary lines, I'm not clear on why you have to do that.
Would you like the retaining wall moved in five foot on the north and the eastern part of the property?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
You said five.
Oh, split the difference.
The board might want to consider, because you have drainage questions, that, that if there's going to be a revised drawing, it really should be resubmitted.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
I think there's some details that may be lacking in trying to give guidance at the meeting and come up with a solution tonight, that it might be helpful to at least allow the, maybe the building professional and the engineer to weigh in on your questions regarding drainage and what is the...
And planting space.
Planting, because two feet, four inches to me is not a lot of area to get large arborvitae.
Yeah, the wall's taller than the open space and...
Right, right.
So, would we postpone or table?
You could ta, well, you've had discussions, so it'll be a tabling.
So, I move that we table this to the next meeting, whenever they can get in.
Do you feel you have enough guidance on what, you need to move it as, as far over for screening those walls as possible, right?
Yes.
So, there's some skepticism that what you've got there isn't going to be sufficient?
Okay, we'll take, I'll take this to the homeowners and speak with the engineers and redraw it and redesign it and resubmit.
Including screening?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have a support.
I have a motion to postpone and support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, you've got your marching orders, thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, item 12, 955 Lone Pine.
How you doing? Dominic Vitale, I'm here representing for 955, we're looking to put a generator in the, actually, front of the house there, right off of Lone Pine, with the area of all the trees and all the windows, and that this is a 1920's home that is still original plaster, there's not really no way to run all the mechanicals to the generator if we were to put it in the back of the house, plus the elevations changed quite a bit to go underground. We have both neighbors' approvals and Board, the homeowners association to put it in the front of the house, and they will be screening. We were trying to get deer resistant, but it sounds like you guys want arborvitae, so homeowner says whatever we gotta do, it will apply to it.
It doesn't have to be arborvitae, but it would have to be evergreen.
Evergreen, right, okay.
Any questions from the board?
I have a quick question, is this the original Saranin house, or it's a different house?
Um, I'm not sure about that, I mean, it's a very new, unique house.
Yeah, I, I do believe it is, he's architectural heritage here, and...
Yeah.
Whatever we can do to preserve that house is...
Right.
I'm in favor of, it looks like a good solution.
Yeah, and it's already pretty tree, you know, a lot of trees in front of it already, so, you know, putting a couple just in that front little, covering it, when it's in that kind of cutty, it really won't block anybody, it's best for all the neighbors.
Any other questions? I'll open this to the public, anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back.
I can make a motion.
Oh, I want it too.
Oh, go ahead. Please do.
The resident architect on the board, I'm all about preserving amazing architectural heritage. In regards to the appeal at 955 Lone Pine Road, I'd like to make a motion to approve the dimensional variance to permit the generator located in the front yard as shown on the supporting drawings. The applicant has shown, has presented, has shown practical difficulty for the strict compliance with the letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, given the lack of other practical locations for a generator. The need for generators is evident in most of Bloomfield Township, and again, we want to preserve our architectural heritage, there's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the alcove in which it's going to sit, and the screening that you've agreed to, and it is not self-created because of the frontage on the lot. So, if the motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and must be obtained prior to installation, and the evergreen screenings that we mentioned must be the height, the unit at the time of installation.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request is granted, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Calling next item, item 13, parcel 1919301009.
Evans Mancho's, representing Oathen County WRC. We are making improvements to our existing pump station located on Inster Road, right next to Walnut Lake. We're asking for two variances, one for a six-foot fence, which is the existing fence height at the facility, and a variance for the offset from 16 feet to 6.5 feet. The reason for the variance is basically the pump station is not moving, we're just making modifications to improve the facility for safety and improve performance.
Any questions? Open this to the public for comment, anyone like to comment on this agenda item? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, the hot box?
Yeah, can you clarify?
So, in addition, we're putting in something called a hot box, it's a proprietary structure that provides heat for piping that will be at grade at the facility. So, as you can see a picture of the structure that we will be placing at the facility.
Yeah, I just want to clarify in the packets, you have a photograph of a pump house, the pump house is existing, the accessory structure is actually this image here.
Okay, all right, that's, I was a little confused of that.
And actually, the dimensions on the agenda are different than the dimensions in the application.
We changed it on the PowerPoint.
It's smaller than what's shown to scale in plan?
Correct.
And is this already installed, or that's just a sample?
That's a sample from another site, I believe.
Is it going to be a chain link fence again?
Correct.
Black powder coated?
Yes, black powder coated chain link fence.
That's an improvement.
We're also gonna kind of clean up the fence line around the property.
So, it's a little straighter.
There's some old stumps from various trees growing through the fences and stuff.
Yeah, okay.
And the current fence is six feet already, correct?
Correct.
You're just replacing it?
Correct. We, we have a permanent easement with the adjacent property owner, he still owns the property, like I said, we have a permanent easement, we've actually struck a deal with them to get some additional easement for, for laydown area for construction purposes. He actually had to sign the application for us to present today, even though it's our facility, they own the property.
Interesting.
So, is the variance for the pump station or the hot box?
What's the hot box?
It's the hot box, my apologies, that is the accessory structure. The variance is because it's in a frontage.
So, we need a permission request for the hot box?
Because it's an accessory structure, yes, thank you.
Okay, okay, I'll make a motion, okay. So, in regard to the appeal at parcel 1919301009, for the accessory structure, I move the request to be approved as submitted based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-76 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as it is a public service and common good to the neighborhood. If approved, the, the motion must include application for all necessary permits within one year, and additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen, but I think we just talked about a black-coded fence. For the dimensional variance in regard to the appeal at parcel 1919301009, for the hot box and the fence exceeding four feet, I move the variance to be approved as requested based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the setback from the road, there's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of it's a, it's a public service and that's supporting the neighbors, unique circumstances when the property have been demonstrated, given the, that it's, I don't know, a public service lot, and this is not self-graded. If approved, the motion must, must include, so application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the fence and the hot box, and additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen.
Support.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
I just wonder who came up with the term "hot box" first, was it the Water Resource Commissioner or Little Caesars?
I believe that's a, the industry, because it, basically what it does is it provides a heated enclosure around piping, because the piping will be above grade so that we can keep it, we can keep the flow going.
Okay, you learned something with all these memes, thank you. All right, the next item, item 14, 1189 Glen Point.
Good evening, I'm Chris Coleman, and I reside at 1189 Glen Point Court. I'm here seeking approval for variance because of the unique size of my lot does not allow me to place the generator adjacent to the building, and I have received HOA approval. The plan is to screen the generator with evergreen foliage. I have a fence on both sides of the property to, I guess, hide it from my neighbors if they don't want to see it, and I've had this site inspected by all utility companies as well.
Any questions from the board? Open this for public comment, anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public comment and bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion. There's no questions. In regards to the appeal at 1189 Glen Point Court for a dimensional variance for generator not immediately adjacent to the residence, I move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance will be unduly burdensome because of the unique size of the lot and the unique shape of the lot. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, for one, he does have approval from the HOA as well as some adjacent neighbors, and it also has screening and fence. Unique circumstances of the property, again, the lot size and the existing floor plan doesn't allow many options, and because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. An additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the generator from public view, and must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting.
Absolutely. Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 15, 5925 Eastmore.
Good evening, I'm Ben Saltzman, I'm the owner of this property. With me here today is the builder, Mr. Lieberman, and the landscape contractor, Mr. Hanson. Seeking approval for the dimensional variation for the retaining wall. Here you can see, actually, there's another image that shows the front of the house, yeah, so...
Oh, you passed on by, sir.
Oh, do we, do we have it?
Sorry.
So, this is the view of the house from the street.
Yep.
We're discussing the retaining wall here on, on this side. It is in excess of the four feet, Andrea, if you could just go back. So, yeah, so, this portion of the wall is really not visible from the street, it's only visible from the inside of the property, from the... from the walkout door. And the wall goes down in height towards the street. So over here where it's more visible from the street, it's just over five feet. I want to mention that the plan, as you can see here, was approved by, by the township for construction. This part of the wall was constructed as per the approved drawing with the height and the tiers that you see here. On this side, we were not able to execute the tiered structure because, if I can point you to this drawing, so there's a large mature tree here that was protected by the tree permit. So that you see the red line here represents the tree fence that was required for this permit. In fact, the root system extended way past this line, kind of where I have the red dashed line. And in addition, there's the yellow line that you see here. That's the gas line that runs from the street to the house. So it was not possible for the contractor to execute the tiered structure on this side of the wall as it was originally approved. So the difference really is that the wall is exactly of the same height as it was approved by the construction plan, only it's straight up, it's not tiered. I have the letters of support from the owner of this property, of this house that you see here, the white house here. And I think there's another slide right here. So this is the view from, the picture on the left is the view from the neighbors to the north of my house. They essentially cannot see the wall because of the rolling terrain on the street. But they also provided the letter of support. And I would say that the wall is executed tastefully and it blends in with the surroundings and, and, but the, I guess what's common in the, in this neighborhood.
So was this all part of, the home was newly built, plus your retaining walls?
Correct.
Or is this a renovation?
No, it's a, it's a new construction.
It's all part of the new construction?
Yeah. And that plan that you see, that's, that was the approved drawing by, by the township.
Do you have any plans to install landscaping? Because, you know, the lawns here and somebody, some kids running across the lawn and then into the seven feet. Do you have any landscape plan for that?
So there is a plan to install climbing hydrangea on, on this side to screen that, that wall. But that would be from, I guess, from the lower side. From the upper side, the building inspector did not require any fencing or planting there because there is no designated pathway that goes in between the two properties.
It just seems like it needs screened.
It needs something. It needs something so somebody, well.
Well, there's safety, but there's also.
The safety issue is more of a concern to me than.
The visual?
The visual.
So you want some sort of plant?
Something on the top so that somebody doesn't walk across and fall in. That's my concern. Just because some.
Like I said, the building inspector who was there on site, he walked the property. He did not require.
Well, but he, he looks at the building code, okay? We're looking at whether we should grant you a variance, which allows us to place reasonable conditions on that variance. So from my, from my perspective, it needs something to put somebody on notice to stop.
Okay.
Some kind of bushes, some kind of something, okay? That's where I'm coming from with it. I don't know what others think.
Yeah, I agree with that. Plus it.
But isn't it true that if this wall was in the back of my property, then it wouldn't even be here today?
No, that's not true.
If it's over four feet, it would be here.
Anything over four feet.
Regardless of where it's at in your property.
In the back of the property?
Yes.
I think it's excluded from this.
No, it's the height.
Okay. But, but there's plenty of walls in Bloomfield Township that are above four feet that have no fencing or anything above them.
Well, but we're talking about.
Talk about your property.
I know, but.
So you're asking for a variance for this property.
Okay. So what would you like to see on top of this wall?
Something that puts somebody on notice that the lawn ends and they're going to drop off seven feet.
Okay.
Okay?
We can install some.
Some kind of, it doesn't have to be anything massive, but something where people stop because they'd have to go through bushes.
Okay. That can be, that can be put in place.
Again, that's just my thought on it.
I agree with that.
Okay? Nothing elaborate, but something that, hey.
That's a reasonable condition.
Yeah.
And make the motion.
Well, we didn't have a public hearing yet.
I'll open this for public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Or close the public hearing and bring it back for the motion.
All right. With respect to the property located at 5925 Eastmore, I would move to grant the request for a dimensional variance for the existing retaining wall of seven feet because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. The compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome for several reasons, including the change in topography of the property, the existence of the landmark tree, as well as the underground gas line. It's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because it visually really does not impact them. The unique circumstances, again, I've already stated, and this is not self created. If the motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing retaining walls. In addition, I'm going to require the planting of, you said, what, some kind of ivy that you're planting for the wall, correct?
Yep.
What did you call it?
Climbing hydrangea.
Climbing hydrangea on the wall from the interior and on the exterior at the, at the maximum height along that edge. I'm requiring some plantings, solid, some solid plantings. I'm not specifying the height, but enough that will put somebody on notice that they need to stop. Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 16, 5971 Burnham.
Good evening. My name is Richie Eto. And Jeff Denna is the owner of the property at 5971 Burnham. We built the house, I built the house for him somewhere around 2016. And Jeff has three kids and he wants to put in a half sports court for them to have outdoor recreation. So the, his backyard faces east. And when we built the house, we planted some evergreen screening. It's almost like a solid wall now. They were eight foot high at the time. I think they're 14 foot high now. And then there's evergreen screening to the south on our neighbor's properties. It's pretty solid. And then on the north, simultaneously, when we were building Jeff's house, Mr. Mark Boff was building his house and he has a pool and his is pretty much solid screening on the west side. So if Jeff were to install, if we grant the variance and install the sports court, the only part of it that would need some screening is, is the west side. So that's what we proposed, screening on the west. And the lot is irregular and there's some issues with the grade. That's one of the flattest spots to put it in. Obviously, the lots on that sub have septic fields and there's a large septic field that's depicted. It's just to the north side of the home. So there's screening to be placed on the west, which makes it pretty much screened from all around. We're proposing to use a turf field to minimize the amount of the noise from the basketball and like a black type netting on the north and east side. That's proposed to be eight foot high, but I'm not sure if it works any better if it's eight foot or seven foot or even six foot. But that's what the, the person who builds sports court recommended. And there's no retaining walls. It's just basically, we're encroaching into the side and rear yard setback just due to the fact that there's almost no other place to put it. And it's basically totally screened.
How, how many trees are you putting on the west side?
As many as you want.
Okay. So you're going to screen it from public view then?
Screen from public view.
Okay. And then actually, the requirement is for screenings, the, the screening has to be on your property. So.
So I spoke to Mark, who may come to the meeting. He said he was going to try to show up, to ask him if he's ever planning to remove those trees. And he said absolutely not. He planted them there for a reason. He has a pool, he has a fence, and it's pretty solid. And, and his intention is to maintain those. So planting trees against trees.
I get it. Okay.
We would, we would have to move the whole thing over and then possibly it starts to get too close. So there's a walkout area with steps. And then he's got a patio and the grade starts to drop from north to south.
Any other questions from the board?
You said this is a half, did I hear someone say it's a half size?
Half size, which is 30 by 50.
That's a half?
That's, yeah, it seems huge.
That seems big. I don't, I don't know off the top how large.
It's even less than half.
I had one tonight that was smaller.
Right, yeah.
There's no regulation size court, so.
Yeah, well, when I heard it's half size, that's why I was trying to.
But there is, is there one basket or two?
Just one.
Yeah, so that's why it's half.
Ah, half court?
Yep.
There's a three point line, so that's, that's, that, that's the half point. I mean, it's actually less than half.
I see. Okay, a half court.
Yeah, it's like down in the corner, the one.
Oh, by the way, there will be no lighting at all.
Yep, can you hear that? Any other questions? I'll open this for the public. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing and bring it back.
So that's the neighbor you have spoken to and they're aware it's going to be two feet away from their lot line?
Yes. And, and also the neighbor, that's, that's, Mark is the neighbor to the north and then spoken to the neighbor to the east as well.
Well, why don't you explain a little bit more of the surface that you're using that's a bit different than the typical court?
I was just asking to clarify the neighbors that he spoke with just for clarification. Sorry.
Regarding the surface, the, they're, sometimes they use a hard surface. It's a pavement and it makes a lot more noise. And the turf is, is basically like an artificial turf and it's much quieter. I don't know the decibels or how they measure it, but it's.
Right, this isn't a concrete surface.
All, the whole thing is turf.
Yep.
Is it green?
It's green, excuse me. It's green. It's supposed to be much more environmentally friendly as well. And like I said, we've been to sport, both type of sports courts, and it is less noise for the neighbors. Right now, the kids play on concrete and it's much louder than what, what they'll play on. So the noise should actually come down for the neighbors by them playing on the, on the turf. I spoke to the neighbor in the rear, very nice lady. She actually came out to the township to review the plans. She called me and said, I'm very happy. Please go, go ahead as long as you promise me. The kids are not going to be playing at nine o'clock at night. I said, no, they won't be playing that late. They'll be in bed. Kids are 10, nine, and seven.
So that's the lady at 5934?
Correct. Judith, yes. Talked to the neighbor to the, in front of the house. They gave us their full support. Talked to the neighbor, excuse me, Alex. He's 5956. He was very happy. He just asked if he can come play once in a while. So we've got his support. And there's other neighbors just said, as long as you let us come play on it, we'll be in full support of it. I think Mark said you wanted pickleball, right?
Any other questions? Open this to the public for comment. Close the public hearing and bring it back. I mean, it is, I mean, all these courts in the corner.
I know. Everybody's putting them in the corner.
Corner courts.
Corner courts.
You don't want me to make the motion. We want it approved, so. I mean, I, I'll make an emotion to approve if all your neighbors are in, in, in support. Where's my list here? All right. In the matter of, what, what are we on here?
16.
16.
Thank you.
I just need my cover sheet. Okay. I will make a motion to approve the, I'll, I'll
start with the permission request. Motion to approve a permission request at 5971 Burnham Road for a sports court located on the property per the drawings provided. Based on the information provided, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with 427.6 standards because the accessory structure is compatible with adjoining properties. The, it's not inappropriate to the neighborhood. We're seeing more and more of these. And the location, the accessory structure, it will not hinder or discourage adjacent use of property due to it being really just a surface treatment. And all of the neighbors are expressing support. With regards to the dimensional variance at the same property, motion to approve based on the information provided, the applicant did demonstrate all standards of practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the sloping of the yard. This has been placed at the flattest spot and the most convenient towards the existing patios. There's no injustice to the neighbors, again, by a reason of their support. Should this motion be approved, all application of necessary permits must be made within one year and, and fence permits. Screening must be placed along that side that is visible to the public that has been noted. All sports court use is limited to daytime use and no illumination is permitted.
I'll support that.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
I'm opposed.
Roll call. Faqui?
No.
Meads?
Yes.
Rosati?
Yes.
Giogrande?
No.
Henry?
Yes.
Gittleman?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
The motion passes five to two.
Congratulations. Your request is.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Calling item 17, 1012 Green Tree.
Hi, my name is Anthony Howie. I'm here with my wife Stephanie Howie. We live at 1012 Green Tree. We are seeking approval for a 16 by 20 by 12 foot high outbuilding or shed, what do you like to call it, to be used as a golf simulator. Due to the irregular size of our yard or the shape of our yard, we would have to put it 12 feet onto the 16 foot variance on two of the sides. And we left four foot on the sides to put some sort of fence, greenery around it.
So there's, there's no other, I mean, that's close to the.
If you look at the, I don't, I think we should have given the survey of the lot. The way it is, see how the backyard, it cuts in like it's the. The red part? Yeah. So the backyard is great. Yeah. We want to put it right here, but we.
Your sketch is not to scale.
It's not.
That sketch you.
Oh, no. When, when this thing first started, I was like, holy cow, when they bring up mine, it's amateur hour. I just talked to a lady downstairs. She told me to draw something up and that's what I put in.
Yeah, no, because I read the thing, but then when I looked at this.
Your sketch shows plenty of other space to accomplish this and frankly, no hardship.
Right, right.
And this photo.
So it would, let me see. So it'd be on the other side of this tree towards this way. And this is the corner lot. I've talked to all the neighbors. None of them have any problems with it at all. The only person that would really see it would be Rabbi Lost behind me. And the way he has his fence and my fence set up, there's like 15 feet of greenery in between it anyway. His fence doesn't go to his fence line. He took his fence to where he didn't want to clean the rest of it up and just put a fence around it. and just put a fence around it, so there's actually like a buffer between our yards.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, your plans don't show any screening.
I drew screening. The circles are screening, sorry, I'm...
Good guy, you did good, you had a good landscape plan.
Yep.
Those are nice bush pictures.
So, again, is three feet enough?
It's four feet.
Skinny screening. Okay.
It should have been, I'm sorry, I don't know if I wrote three, but on the thing it says, oh, sorry, it says twelve feet, so it's four feet, actually. It's not three feet.
Any other questions from the board? Yeah, the drawing's a little... I'm sure your short game is more precise than the drawing.
Yeah, I was, I was very unaware of what kind of drawing I was supposed to bring.
All right, so I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back.
Well, I, oh, oh. In regards to the... Before you start, I have one question.
Okay.
I thought I read somewhere that you were talking about lighting in the back?
No.
Okay, I want to clear...
No, there'll be no lighting in the back.
Okay, I want to be clear on that, okay. I'm sorry.
I just want to reflect that we do have a, one neighbor letter.
And I didn't see that. What is this?
Right, she's opposed. Opposed.
All right, with respect to the property located at one-zero-one-two Green Tree Road, I would move to grant the permission request for the proposed shed because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with section forty-two, or forty-two dash seven-point-six standards. The size of the accessory structure is appropriate and is compatible with the adjoining neighborhood, and the location does not hinder or discourage adjacent property. In addition, I would move to grant the dimensional variance because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. And essentially, compliance with the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the odd shape of the lot, the odd location of the lot in relationship to the parcels around it, and the fact that the backyard is so oddly shaped that there's essentially no backyard. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because the, the structure will be screened with evergreen plantings, and the unique circumstances I've already stated about the lot, and it's not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed shed. All permits must be obtained prior to construction, and additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen the shed from public view. Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed. I mean, it's like, what do we have setbacks for?
The only name?
Yes.
Thank you.
Six-one.
Uh, congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Uh, calling item eighteen, three-one-one, Wood Edge Drive.
Hi, I'm John Bulke. I live at three-eleven Wood Edge Drive. We're asking that, that I have a garage addition to the back of my garage, to the rear of my garage, to store a third vehicle and lawn equipment and other items. We have approval from all our neighbors, all the surrounding neighbors. The, the wall will be the same brick as, as the existing brick now on the garage. We'll have the same landscaping along the side. It will, the deck will join the other side of the garage wall, so, uh, it'll just look like the extension of the, of the house now.
Thanks very much. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. The dimensions don't seem to match the size that we have listed here. The garage is twenty-three approximately by twenty-six. That's six hundred feet.
I have five-seventy, five-seventy-six.
Proposed is twenty-four, forty-seven.
It's, it's twenty-two-seven by twenty-six feet deep.
Five-nine-three-point-five-eight square feet. Yeah, it's not twenty-four, forty-seven.
I'm sorry, that may have been a...
Math?
Administrative error. Math.
Yeah, I think you're right, though.
So then does he need a bearing?
The house is probably not right either, at thirty-five.
The house, they show us twelve, twelve-hundred.
He's provided us with the information, my apologies. So the total garage area, which includes the both garages, correct?
Yes.
That would be one thousand and eleven square feet. And the existing building of the house is seventeen-thirty-eight. So clearly, it exceeds the fifty percent.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other questions? I'll open this to the public for comment. Thank you. Thank you for your patience during this.
Do you state his name and address?
Yeah, maybe give a name and address. Why don't we do it the right way? We've waited this long. Let's follow procedure.
He's my next-door neighbor.
Yeah, I'm Rick Spiegel. I'm at three-two-five Wood Edge Drive.
And your comment again?
Oh, my comment is, is I think it's a wonderful idea. Our drive, we're right next to each other, so I'm right next to John. So I'm in full support.
Thank, thank you.
And the reason for it is so we can keep the cars off the driveway and have them stored away.
Got it. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Okay. In regard to the appeal at three-eleven Wood Edge Drive for the, um, proposed accessory space exceeding fifty percent of the ground floor of the main building for the garage, I move the variance to be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the size of the lot. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of support from the neighbors. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the, you know, size and shape of the lot, and this is not self-created. Application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Calling item nineteen, fourteen-oh-one Club Drive. Gentlemen in the back row.
Good evening, I'm Ryan Moore, Superintendent, Forest Lake Country Club. We're seeking on basically rebuilding a starter's building, kind of a little different size. We used to have a starter's building that was eight by eight. Our goal on this one is nine by ten with an overhang. As you can see on the left-hand side, the idea of the overhang is we really don't have a good sun shelter for our senior membership. We probably have two to five individuals that work outside this building. And plus, we have numerous young caddies that we kind of stage in this area, so it protects from the elements, immediate sun shelter, so... Realistically, the, the building's basically the same in the same location. I'm not sure if you have the photos of us trying to
Sure.
Remove our, our other one.
Sorry.
The real goal, sorry, we got a couple extra pictures. We tried to move the other one and put it back in place. It kind of failed during the process. I'm not sure if you have us on this thing, but, uh... Long and short, we, our desire is to rebuild it in the exactly same location. You can see the extenuated structure in this kind of drawing up here. We're here two, three months ago to get approval for the wall structure, which we're still almost done with that. We're gonna put the landscape out in front. This building relatively has no landscape around it. It's really the function. It's kind of an in-and-out building, so we can service our membership, which is across the road from our clubhouse. And the second ask is, on the right-hand side, is to erect this clock, which is, you can see we're at the starter shack, which we want to build. You can kind of see on that drawing. Our membership, who stayed around and saved the club years ago, put money together, and this is kind of a momentum to those individuals to kind of save the property and all the improvements that they put forward towards it, so... Any questions on?
Looks good.
Looks great.
Where's the clock exactly?
So I could... Oh, boy, you're probably better at pointing out. I think it's way in the back, right there.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, in proximity, I kind of gave, um, this, I'm not sure if you have this, but, um... As you look at this, if we look straight to the east to get to the street, which is Airside Road, is three-hundred-and-twenty-five feet. To the west is all the clubhouse grounds, so the nearest kind of corner of the property you'd consider to the roadway is two-hundred feet, and the other way is another three-hundred feet, so... Realistically, this clock sits pretty dead center of the property. It's in behind our seventeen box, so there is some kind of slope that hides it on one side a little bit, the base of it. But it's not obstructing anyone's vision to the property. On the sides of the property, there are pretty large oak trees and stuff like that, and we're landscaping the front up from ourselves from Club Drive, so it kind of sits really nice inside there.
And that booth is just a replacement, right?
It is a replacement with an addition of what we want to call almost like a sun screening from, from the elements out there, sun, rain type deal. So it's just, uh, I can see, if you look at the drawing, it kind of flips around, but on the left-hand side, it's just, you can see right through it, kind of deal. Just an open air, just a covered pavilion where you can get, escape the elements.
Any other questions? It looks very nice. You've done a really nice job with the improvement of the golf course and grounds. So I'll open this for public comment. I'd like to comment on this item. Close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I can make a motion here. For the, I'll start with the permission request at one-four-zero-one Club Drive for the starter booth building and clock. I'm gonna move that they be approved as presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two, J R seven-point-six standards because the accessory structures are appropriate to the neighborhood and this, um, club, which I think probably most of the neighbors may be members of. And so it won't hinder or discourage any use of adjacent property in that area. With regard to the dimensional and lateral variance at one-four-zero-one Club Drive for the proposed clock and starter booth located in the Club Drive frontage and the clock exceeding fourteen feet in height, I'm gonna move that those also be approved as submitted. The applicant demonstrated all the compliance for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, given the fact that this is a, a country club and the booth is just a replacement with some weather enhancements. With regard to the injustice to the adjoining neighbors, again, this is a country club and it's unique in that nature, and these two, um, structures will not hinder anybody's use of their property. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given the fact that it's a country club, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated. The, all necessary permits should be made within one year and obtained prior to construction, and I'm not gonna require evergreens to screen.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So we have the item that we postponed?
Yeah.
Number nine?
I quite frankly did not understand this one.
Well, if you couldn't understand it, then we'd not have a chance.
No, I'm serious, though. I, I don't understand...
This, well, so it was to hold up the driveway due to the grade change? I think?
Oh, wouldn't... Yeah, but it doesn't appear to look that way. That's why I wondered if somebody could...
Was anybody out there to see it?
Give me some more information on this one.
No, I don't know.
In, in trying to answer your questions, I guess, leading a little bit, is that the, you know, with the additional access to Echo Road, the applicant was then dealing with the grade change that occurred from the drive from Echo now traversing along that westerly edge and then, and then exiting to Scenic Court. And by, by accommodating that new drive, it resulted in, because of the grade change on the property, having to retain the driveway, or the walls, adjacent to the driveway. So they're using this stack block, stone block, to do just that. There is quite a grade change as you go interior to the site, especially on that westerly elevation.
So do you want to comment on this item? So, so I think we...
Can I ask one more thing first? I, I'm curious, how, how did they get to, access to two roads?
They applied to the road commission and got approval. Yes. Originally, it was intended to be a, it was a, um, a curved access just to Scenic Road. Or driveway. But because of the access to Echo and the improvements that have been proposed, actually, a detached garage that was approved by the ZBA all lend itself to then wanting to have better turning movements, and also their three-car garage, which they identify. It also allows for better turning movements into and out of their three-car garage from that westerly elevation of the home.
Okay.
So, uh, we have Mr. Nochman, who's waited very patiently throughout the entire meeting to make comment. Could we take his comments at least? So what, what do we want to do, though, about taking action on this? We want to...
Well, why don't we, you just open the public hearing, let's hear what he says, and then we can decide.
Right, okay. All right, so, uh, so I guess, are we satisfied with the presentation by the staff, then?
I understand better now.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions?
I have one quick question. The, the ten-foot retaining wall is only seen from the inside of the property. Does anybody from the outside see it?
It looks like it's in far.
Maybe Mr. Nochman can answer that, so... Why don't we open the public hearing and...
Yes.
Please, sorry for the, uh...
Thank you.
So patiently waiting for...
Number one, my name is Alan Nochman. I live at fourteen-twenty-five Echo Lane. I did not receive notice because I presume that I am beyond the distance that requires notice to be given. But I drive by there literally two or three times a day. My wife walks by there virtually every day for the last ten years, and, um... I'm not saying that I have a legal position to take. I just wanted to share some of the views of a number of the neighbors who have consulted with me as an attorney. I'm not here as an attorney. I am a real estate attorney, but I'm here just as a resident in the area. I've lived there since nineteen-eighty-seven. I was not apparently given notice when the first concept came here for approval, but I understand that everything that's being built there now was approved. Is that right?
That's correct, yes, it's under permit.
Okay, so I, that's moot. I can't comment on that. You already have given your approval. It seemed to me that with all the construction going on there, and I've talked to a number of the contractors every morning when I go to work or when I come back, that what they're building is not, to me, in conformance with the recognition of a natural beauty road. Now, I may be out of order, but I promised my wife I would say this because she feels very, very strongly about this. And whether I have a legal right to say it, I'm just suggesting that everything that's been done there has been the antithesis of what I would expect to have against a natural beauty road. And by adding any additional structures height-wise or whatever, I just think it adds insult to injury. I, I don't think I have anything more to say. I just wanted to express my, my feelings as a, as a good neighbor in the area.
Is that representative of the neighbors you've spoken to?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if I can add, we're only here on the retaining wall. That's it, a stone retaining wall, made out of stones, which is compatible with nature. Okay, we're not here on anything else. The design, the home, the structures.
I, 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 I think I said that. I understand that.
Yeah, so...
But, but, but the retaining wall, I think you're asking, the request is that it be higher.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just saying, I'm commenting on the fact that it may blend into some of the stone that's already been put there for the driveways, but it's gonna be higher. the stone that's already been put there for the driveways, but it's going to be higher. It's going to be a little bit more of an eyesore. Um, I have nothing more to say on it. I understand. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Mr. Knackman. So since no one else is here, I'll close the public hearing.
I was just going to make an observation. Um, the, the, the notation in green, um, on this plan, uh, for the first, uh, uh, portion of, of the, of the access from Echo Drive Road, says natural stone retaining wall built with existing boulders. So their existing stone boulders that are, that were found on the premises are going to be what's visible, um, from the Echo Road curb cut. It's not until you get to, uh, you know, well within the lot itself, um, and beyond the existing vegetation that they then are proposing the ten-foot wall.
So you can't see it from Echo Road?
So the ten-foot wall is, is, is setback from the front edge of Echo Road.
And it's at the same grade as Echo Road and then dropping down?
I'm sorry?
It's roughly, the top of the wall is around the same elevation as Echo Road and then it drops down into the property?
Yeah, why does it have to be so tall?
Because of the, they're building up the, the driveway to, to be able to accommodate the, the turning movement and so the, you see that says top of wall and bottom of wall is actually at eight ninety-eight and nine oh three. You know, so that's five feet, um, and then it goes from nine, eight ninety-eight to nine oh one, so it's four feet. It doesn't get, uh, larger until it's adjacent to the, um, garage, which is that blue box, that is their detached garage, uh, that was approved by the township or by the ZBA. And then that top of wall, eight ninety-five to nine oh five, that's actually on the Scenic Court side of that blue detached garage. That's where the ten feet, um, is identified. If you follow the top of wall and bottom of wall calculations around the, the red line.
So just to be clear, are there existing elevation issues or are they creating elevation issues?
They are altering the elevations to accommodate the drive, the new drive leading to Echo Road.
Should we postpone to wait for the...
It is, it is.
A lot of driveway.
It looks, I mean, it's...
Like the garage faces front and they can get in and out.
I don't...
Okay, I, I...
My, I, I, personally, my, I mean, my parents and Mr. Knackman have been neighbors for...
You lived out there.
Thirty years and you...
Right?
And, uh, I know this house and I, I, I mean, I don't know if I'm allowed to ex, like...
Yeah.
But, but I know my...
Unless you feel like you have a conflict of interest and could not be...
No, I, I don't, because I actually don't know. But I know that like my, I've spoken to my parents specifically about this property and they share the same sentiment as Mr. Knackman. It's been under construction for a long time and what they're doing with the driveway off Echo Road, it's disruptive and, uh, it is, it is different. It's like a very unique architectural thing they've done to get onto Echo Road, which you know is a beauty road that everyone who lives on it is so proud of and maintaining. So I personally am resistant to approving this at least without hearing from them and explaining their situation.
Yeah, I think we should postpone it or table, I don't know what the...
But, but the road's been approved, is that right? So they've got all the...
Yep.
The driveway access, the curb cut.
The curb cut, yeah, I'm, I'm sort of, generally, what I'm saying in terms of the...
And that wasn't a township decision, right? That came from the road commission?
The road commission approved, it was both the road commission and the township because we have to look at the grades and the, the, um, the drainage, because there's a swale that runs along Echo Road. So it was reviewed both by engine...
But they're not taking into account the Scenic Road or anything, they're just looking at, you know, road requirements and turn radiuses and...
Exactly, yes, location and distance from Scenic Court.
It's very exposed right now.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's just a lot of driveway and I just never, it's like, yes, you get, it's like a traffic circle that you'd see on the highway.
Yeah.
Well, I would move to table this.
Yeah, because there, this...
I support that.
...the applicant can appear.
All right, so we have a motion to table and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so it's, uh, table. Thank you, Mr. Knackman.
Thank you.
And, yeah, so do I have a, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And second?
The fourth.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, we're adjourned.